Please leave.
So for point of record, Chuck Euler, the chairman is not here tonight. I'm filling in for him. Bob, of course, the vice chair, and that brings up Tim Schneider from alternate into primaries. And if we can really quick, I'll go around the room. Tim Schneider and Altonin. Mark Tilber, the planning board member, Amanda Van Laken, myself, Scott. Neil, that's right. Sarah Reynolds, town planner, Chris Nadler, our attorney, and Eric Cooper, our member from MRB group. Karine is our secretary and Kim is our remote access coordinator. We normally go right straight by the order of the schedule of events today. But before I do that, I'm sorry. Like to have a privilege of the floor. If anybody would like to talk about anything that's not on the schedule tonight. Would anybody like privilege of the floor tonight? I'd see nobody. I'll make a note that also the public notices for the public meeting tonight went out on twenty August. For these meetings, for these applications. So to start things off. We've had a request that number twelve. Scott Harder goes first today on Wifel's Road. So CPN twenty twenty four dot zero eight six. Nice to see Scott online. Great Scott.
You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks for accommodating us. I think Kevin may be in the audience as well, based on my telephone conversation with him today. The the project is a single lot site plan. The property was recently subdivided, and I believe the map was filed in the last day or so. So the lot is official. And basically a single family home, continuation of the same homes, frontage lots along Wifel's Road, similar to what we did for On Lee. Who developed many homes to the west of this on Wifel's Road. Thinking it had to be maybe eight or ten years ago now. Kevin can speak to you about what he wants to do, where the style of his house and what he's intending to do if he would like to do so. Think we've done a complete job in terms of showing the the actual footprint of the house, the driveway access. All the things that do you require? I know that we need to provide more detail on our stormwater system, our infiltration system that will take the roof drainage. That's intended to be shown on the final plans. I'm not really aware of any other comments that may have come recently that affect the drawing from what you currently see.
It's going to be a single family, as Scott said, ranch style house. And there's plenty of room there because it's over acres.
One question or ask at that, how wide is your driveway going to be?
Um, I believe it's eleven or twelve feet.
Twelve will be minimalized.
Okay.
Okay, so make sure that's noted and put on your record.
Okay.
Did you say driveway?
Driveway.
It's not shown, but it's noted.
Oh, it's noted.
Underneath work plan legend.
Well, let's know.
As far as we decide.
Oh, it is twelve, if noted.
Yeah, I think I think that comes under the legend item A, you know, twelve foot wide driveway. Under the work, work plan legend. Paragraphs.
Board members, any questions? No. No questions.
It's okay.
It's okay.
ECB.
Yes. I read through the ECB.
ECB just asked for dark sky compliant and the lighting.
Yeah.
And then native plantings.
And.
Then I said, I think they also divide as part of subdivision, not a lot loss of our land. So no problem or discussion from there.
Is your septic worked already?
It's sewed.
I mean, oh, it's unscrewed.
Yes, sir.
We lost the plans on this.
I just lost them. I know I don't have them there in there.
The workspace, I think accidentally got bumped ahead. But if you.
Both numbers, there's two numbers for fifty one four.
Yeah.
There's nothing in either one of them.
There, you need to scroll up a little bit in the workspace where behind you, Kim's showing you the difference right there. It'll open on the fulfillment side, which only has recent items in the attachments. But if you scroll up and click on application, it'll take you back to the original set. It was just an accidental click on our side. This has happened once or twice before. We can't back it out when this happens. All the original items are still there.
I just knew that I had seen it.
Yeah.
Tonight I don't.
Yeah, I noticed it this morning too, but everything's still there. You just have to click a little extra to get there. So I apologize for that.
We always learn.
Yep. Any other questions? No. We entertain emotions.
Now we bundle secret type two in the site plan. Let me pull up the things. So I'll, I'll make a motion to bundle the secret type two action and the single stage site plan of Google for CPN twenty four zero eight six at fifty one four Wifel's Road. Do we have any additional conditions that we are adding as a part of the single site plan approval? There's ten listed currently. I heard anything else. So, okay, with the ten conditions as listed. I'll serve. Thank you.
In discussion. All in favor?
I.
Thank you. It was thankfully scheduled. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Next on the schedule is Brennan. Thomas.
Good evening. Brian Marks with Marks Engineering here, representing Michael Holmes, I'm sure Ron Hankel. The application for you is for six new site plans. The subdivision was recorded and it's been filed away since earlier this year. We had made amendments to it. It was filed earlier this year. So there are legally six lots there. Each of the six new residents will have an onsite septic system, shell modified systems, which have been approved by the Department of Health already. They'll be connected to water on Brickyard and Thomas Road. They'll also have infiltration trench for stormwater that comes off the roof of new structures. We've addressed the town engineers' comments they've sent to us with a response last week. And we have addressed the highway superintendent's comments that he's provided. There was, we attended the ECB meeting. There was very limited comments from ECB. And they were, there was, as far as I know, no comments from the ag committee. I think they reviewed it also prior to the subdivision. So that's what that'll open up to questions.
Before we get into that, can you just explain sort of for the record, so we don't wind up setting a precedent why this has been segmented? But sure, there's reasons. What is it? Why did the subdivision and then six lots? You don't usually see it this way.
Usually it's all subdivision application.
Sorry.
This, the, well segmented, I guess in terms of seeker, we don't have seeker tonight, but the the project was subdivided by the previous owner and then sold.
Thank you, sir. Brennan, I will mention there are six different applications and there are six different resolutions.
We'd love for you to bundle them all. I would love to bundle them all from beginning, but.
In reviewing them, if I may, here several of the letters or the plans don't refer to each plot, each lot. If I go into lot one, for example, the site plan calls out lots one through six. And it's on that way through many, many others. I think you were asked to put lot one for lot one, lot two, lot two, and it's like that way for like two or three of the lots, but not all of the lots. So so for example, Kim, if you can bring up the first lot, site plan.
Are you talking about a different file list?
Okay, not, okay, yeah, go to the right. I'm sorry. And then it's listed right there, one through six.
Right. So all the plans are all the same. We discussed this in PRC.
But they're not all the same because sometimes you've listed number four separately. Number, number four, number three. They're all separate. So they're not consistent.
The, the cover sheet is, is a unique for each lot of the cover sheet of the set. We, we discussed it in PRC. Rather than creating six new plan sets, we were going to maintain the site plans as all for all lots. And we were just going to update the cover sheet to address each lot in particular. And your, your condition, your approvals certainly can, and they're going to read lot one of the uptown corner subdivision.
I guess my question would be if I own lot two and I bring up lot two, am I going to get all six?
You're going to get the plan that shows all six options.
Right now it shows all of them.
Right.
That's.
Right. Yeah, they're all, like I said, the site plans are all the same. We did, we discussed it in PRC with Chuck. It was just, we came to the conclusion, rather than creating six unique sets for individual lots. It was, we were going to keep the same site plan for all six lots. We were just going to put a unique cover sheet on each one.
So then my question is, like on lot two, you have the driveway listed as twenty feet. But it's not listed on any other lots.
Right.
So if I, if lot three is twenty feet?
Yeah, it calls us typical, which would mean typical to all.
I apologize. I wasn't at PRC, but I'm just, but I see six individuals and then see one through six listing. And they're all a little bit different. I will note though, Brennan, you did put on there the fifty foot easement. That's been on there, the thirty foot easement on the, on the sidewalk, or not sidewalk, but the trail there. I understand you have finalized with the pipe company, I forget their name off my head. That Buckeye, that that house can be fifty foot from the pipeline itself.
That's correct.
So that had been taken care of. Your stormwater plan looked pretty good to me.
Thank you.
Always a debt for that. I would say all your water internal trick off water infiltrations all go to daylight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So like you said, the ag was no loss, ECB, no problem, just native species if you plant. And you said you answered MRV. Pipeline, I will note, and I don't know if we need to have a condition for this. Eric or not, but those houses can't have any fences unless Buckeye approves them according to the Buckeye plan. There was, I think, the pipeline that Buckeye says something about on it or near it.
Within fifty feet. Little structure within fifty feet of the pipeline.
It's no, no habitable. But then fifty. And then I think they're, you read the fences and I read it like, if I own that house, I need to have approval by Buckeye to get.
It was structured, not handled.
Can we bring that up, Kim?
I'm sorry?
Can you bring up the Buckeye pipeline, letter that they sent us? It was within the right of way either. You couldn't do it within the right of way.
I guess whatever, we'll comply with the Buckeye.
Yeah, that's, that's all I wanted to see is a condition that says, you know, we, yeah, those houses or those owners need to comply with the Buckeye.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
And I'm fine with that.
I think it's buried in the deed if I understand correctly. That the, the required to meet those requirements.
Occupy instructions.
Yeah, if you go to fencing, I mean, not that's just the email, the, the actual which came from Buckeye Pipeline, the letter themselves or the whatever it was that they sent.
Yeah, that one we hear.
Yeah, the use restrictions.
Mm hmm. Just control of.
Fences and walls. Right there.
When access to the road is not permitted.
Right.
Review on a case by case basis.
Within the right of.
Within the right of way. So a lot of those lots go through that right of way.
Yeah.
So they couldn't have a fence through it unless Buckeye approved it on a case by case.
Yes.
Okay. Long as it's either conditioned or noted in the deed or something, but I just, you know. Want that to be noted. Did you receive your shipper letter? Letter?
We did receive a letter from Shippo last year. That from the one subdivision was created, requesting that they provide a phase one archaeological survey. We plan to address that with Shippo and provide what they need to satisfy their concerns.
Did, I think I read in the letter that Buckeye was supposed to come out and re-mark the pipeline better?
And they did.
They did that.
We resurfaced it in actually, it's, it's the same location.
Okay. On your seekers that are attached to every one of these. Each one is a little different. Like, for example, Kim, can you bring up like number one seeker plan or slot one seeker? I thought they might have been a copy and a paste from every single one of them, but they weren't. They're all a little bit different.
What section did you want?
Go down to well, this right, well. It says that's correct, that, you know, lots one through six. It'd be really nice if it said lot one, but go down to eleven. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? You said yes. On each one of them. You can accept it.
That's a no, that's correct.
So those have to be changed on every single one of them. Those are all marked that way. And if you go. Okay, now, so. If you go up, Kim. On land use, like a number four, I think it is, right here. I didn't know. I mean, you're so close to the airport. Was that, you know, needed to be as different other land use or as these owners are going to know that they're buying a house near the airport? I don't know. But they are. And I noticed that the airport never had any comments. So that's all I had on your seekers. If you go through an eleven, just if you can, some of them said looked like the seeker from this actual subdivision. Like number four, five and six or something like that reads for subdivision and not for site plans.
Is that on our part or?
Yeah, I mean, when you submit it, so number number two. Number two lot is reads that way. It goes for subdivision, reads for subdivision.
That's interesting.
Yeah. Subdivision.
I don't know why that's a little bit. That one's different from the others.
Right. There's a few in there like that.
That's not correct.
Sometimes when I fill out seeker and it's in that fill in sign box. If you don't print media, it sometimes reverts to whatever else is in there too. I think one of yours was blank in there too. And I've, I've made, I've done the same thing multiple times. I wondered if that might be why, because I can still see that it's blue.
Yep. You're probably right.
So definitely go through that. Anything, anybody else? I said enough.
You took my notes.
I'm sorry.
From what I can tell, looking at the overall, inside of the silver maple ash. It's outside of one of the sites. I just don't see it on the site plan.
We're going to seek her actually, just before we go off too far. Is it even required for the section? These actions, seeker.
No, they're considered individually type two action for single family. So that was actually a question I was going to ask Chris.
Yeah.
You probably wouldn't want to condition it. Seeker being done, if you're also taking the seeker action in this case, you're saying it's like, but you, they would really need other.
Yeah.
I think if you just declare it, it has the type two resolution, the inconsistencies are moved.
Moved, yeah.
The inconsistencies in the seeker.
Right, because they're all type two actions. They're not listed actions. And I imagine seeker is probably done when they subdivide it too, so.
Yeah. Just it's part of the resolution as not required.
Yeah, so the secret type two resolution. Secret type two, if it's a type two action, it's on the list of type two actions. Eric just pointed out that a single family residence is a type two action. And the seeker regulations say if it's type two action, then stop. And that comes before fill out the environmental assessment form, the EA, part one, part two, or part three, we went over the book.
Yeah, the town leaders said for a long time, just as ease for the town event than it is unless there are.
This is, in this case, applied archaeological, so it's not a bad thing.
Well, and it looks like, it sure looks like a type or an unlisted action because it looks like a site plan for six single family residences on twenty nine acres. But if we're doing them individually, I think you're fine. The form says this.
Individual bundle, right?
I think there are some slight differences.
That's fine, right?
The resolutions.
Yeah, there's, I think, well, there's a few like differences like lot four and like many of the lots in Crossley. That easement, so. Yeah. Anything, anybody else? Scott, I don't know. I will say on the resolution that I see. I assume it's, I see lot one, but I assume it's on every single one of them. Number ten shows a fifteen foot wide side of law easement, which I see on the plans of earnings.
I think I only included that in lots one through four that front on there and now these, it's shown there that owner provides that condition just to include that it needs to be reviewed and approved by the town engineer and town attorney.
I think it was, I think those all handled when they're in the subdivision.
Cycle.
The easements were added at the time of the subdivision, whether they're filed or not, I got it.
It's on the plan, I thought.
Yes.
I saw it.
Is there a library page on it? It looks like there is.
Let's add the conditions so that
Yep.
if it turns out one of them is missing or whatever, we can
Got it.
address it.
Do I, let's see, the conditions in the last one through four resolution, but not the other ones.
The other thing that I didn't notice was I saw the trail easement along Brickyard. Across the street on Thomas, there's a gravel path. Was that intended for both sides of the street?
I think what we did was all the way at Brickyard, on that side, we've had an easement all the way through there.
That's right. And that's, it's only sure if on Thomas, because there's that, that easement exists on Thomas Road on the other side. So across the street, it was intended for both sides of that.
That had to do with that other development at the time.
Okay. So that wasn't just a trail period.
I don't think so.
Okay, so unfortunately, we have to take it individually. That's what I was told.
Would you seeker and site plan together for each?
Each, each has to be a separate resolution.
Got it.
So a board member could say, I make a motion to pass the seeker and site plan resolution for lot one. But we have to do one through six.
One.
Yeah, so then you're going to have to say.
And warm red, you're good.
Motion is made, and I know there's draft resolutions out there. Do you mind if I look at the conditions?
But. They're passed.
Well, I will ask, is there anybody from the public who would like to talk about this plan? Thank you.
We're hearing all comments for lot one, lot two, lot three, lot four, lot five, and lot six. At this time.
Now I can ask a question. These about three, three.
Can you come up here?
Oh, we want to come up?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay. I just wondered if these are about three acres piece.
No, there, no.
No.
They're listed. Two point four six is lot number four, one point zero seven is lot number five. Lot number six is one point zero eight.
Okay.
They all exceed the.
Four, four is the largest, right? Yeah.
Thank you. So, nothing else? I'll entertain motions that are one through six.
Individually.
Individually.
All right, I'll start, I guess. So I, how many, so I move to accept seeker in site plan for lot number one with how many conditions?
So there's the ten there, and modifying ten to add the language about easement to be reviewed by town engineer and town attorney. And then adding condition for Nokia plans and direct compliance with Buckeye Partners Pipeline, pipeline, right of way use restrictions. And then second or twelfth condition for airport disclosure note on the plans.
Thank you.
The language, though, I know it's something you've been fast, I've worked with the law, so make sure.
So twelve conditions, and again, this is for CPN twenty four oh four five.
I'll second that.
Kim second. Any other discussion? All in favor? CPN twenty four zero four six, number two lot. Anybody like to take that on?
I will go. Um, uh, for CPN twenty four zero four six is lot two. I'll bundle the seeker type two and the single stage site plan. Approval and, uh. Mr. Cooper, are we doing the same ten, eleven, twelve?
Same biopatience and emissions.
I'll second.
Any discussion? See none? All in favor? Okay, CPN twenty twenty four dash forty seven lot three of six at Thomas Road. I'll make this motion to accept uh, the bundle and seeker. And site plan approval on lot three. At Thomas Roads, CPN forty seven.
With the same twelve.
With the same twelve there, yes. Any discussion? None, all in favor? Hi. Twenty twenty four, uh, zero forty eight is uh, lot four. Of this site plan.
I'll make that motion, bundle motion with the seeker and the. For CPN twenty four dash zero three, you know, say, say a plan approval with well, with the conditions.
I'll second.
Got it, Mark and Tim has a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Just two more to go. CPN zero, uh, twenty twenty four dash zero four nine lot five.
I'll make that motion. Uh, to bundle uh, the single stage site plan and the seeker type. To action for CPN twenty four oh forty nine and Brickyard Road. With twelve conditions.
On this one, there's only eleven. There was no condition related to sidewalks, so it doesn't apply here, so it's just about that partners.
I'll second. I'll second.
Uh, no discussion, anyone?
An airport, no easements. Got it.
All in favor? And the last one.
I'll make the motion to approve CPN twenty twenty four dash zero five zero. For the secret site plan with eleven conditions.
Mark has a second. Scott. Made the motion with eleven. Any discussion? None, all in favor? Oh, if you wanna go.
There's some, just. I wrote the three additional ones over there.
Thank you.
All good? Thanks for coming in. Okay, next up is uh, T-Mobile Northeast LLC, Colin Morgan. Four four thirty dual road would like to uh. Put up T-Mobile where Verizon is now. Anybody here for that? Can we, can we discuss that even then out here?
Absolutely.
That's my thought. Um, this is a. Because it's a special use. Uh, it's a public meeting, so open the meeting. And uh. Anybody any comments on this addition? For T-Mobile to add to Verizon? Which they don't even have the tower. I mean, the tower is up. Yeah, the roads. Anything by the public? I'd like to discuss this. Seeing nothing. Then this is gonna be a special use permit. Amendment, is that right, Sarah?
I can't remember. I don't, I'd have to look at these only law terms.
Adding to the one that's there already?
There's existing, there's an existing special use permit on the site for the tower that was just constructed for Verizon and T-Mobile was requesting to co-locate on that existing tower. With existing ten facilities on the tower, and I think some. Work on the ground, not a lot.
Within the footprint of Horizon?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there gonna be consider any difference in bonding or anything one does want to refer to? Do we need to consider anything different related to bonding or deconditioning of the tower because we're playing a second?
I believe that is in our letter. So special use permit. Say, this is a zoning law, they were giving class for renewal of special use. So comment four of our letter, the empty supplier of the title can annual code. Twenty six eighty twenty and yard construction maintenance of existing decommissioned plan and estimate. It may be amended to remove the cost of moving additional facilities by separate here to the owner operator. A co-located service and town should be executed as mainly. Yeah, make sure I consult with the town attorney.
That's what I. Thank you. And that's what we did. On one recently, the original amount was enough to cover. Those are real. So I don't think this is a renewal.
Yeah, well, we know that two different.
Sound code, the way we always apply it in. Quick look right here, do that. Planning board may approve a special use permit for a. Personal wireless communication facility. Comprised of co-located antennas and accessory structures. If you need a special permit for each one. For each additional co-location. One for the tower. And that when the first one usually is put in the tower and an antenna. And then additional ones get new special use permits.
Absolutely, that's how we voted anyway, requesting these special use. For the co-location, we didn't say requesting an amendment to.
Yeah, this is a new special.
A new box. So they, it's also a little, a site plan, also site plan and special use. Right. I, I did. We did see the site plan on this, but it's just within the current. Location already there. Any discussion in the public for this? Anything on the board, anybody else? No?
General from, um. I think we captured it too, and apologize if this is, if I missed it, but the last one, but. I'm good, two twenty sixty one, a. On the co-location period of five years.
Yes.
So the last one we did was in doubt, and that's because Verizon had problems with the. Uh, five year term left. I believe Verizon's.
But I think that was on the renewal for the bond. I think this is just related to.
It was, we changed.
Or the authorized franchise period, which I'm assuming is longer than five years. Just making sure that.
Because it's five years or that, okay.
So it's.
It's an award.
It's an award. If not, then if, you know, if that one you're authorized. Franchise period, that's, that's on the applicant, not. I would ask that we amend our findings for the. On the special use permit to say planning board has reviewed the. Each and every item in town code two twenty there sixty. And is satisfied that the application meets those requirements.
Second, you got it.
Yeah.
Exactly what I just said. Sorry, I withdrawn my request.
All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing. And uh. Look for motion to approve this resolution. Pardon? Seeker unlisted?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, actually, we've got site plan. A seeker.
Special. So I'll start with the seeker unlisted action. I'll make a motion. Um, to approve the seeker unlisted for twenty four zero seven seven. For this. This project.
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? None, all in favor? So next up, we'll do the site plan. Resolution.
I'll make that motion for CPN twenty four seventy seven, single stage site plan and.
I think we have to, I think historically we've done. Site plan.
To CPN twenty four dash zero seven seven, don't say it's site plan. For forty four thirty.
And I'll second.
So we have a seeker approval. And a site plan approval wait now for a special use.
Now that we decided it is just a special use, not an amended special use.
Right.
So I'll move to accept.
Do we have to vote on the site plan?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah. Uh, all in favor? Thank you.
Now I will. Move to accept the CPN twenty four oh seven seven special use permit.
I just see that the top, the top of my resolutions has amended special use permit, so I can strike the amended portion.
Yeah, that's why I knew I said that somewhere.
Now we have three conditions.
Six.
Oh yeah, if I kept going to the next page, see, I got, I'm used to the paper.
Yeah.
I'm getting used to it with six conditions.
Tim, any discussion? None, all in favor? And I get to sign this right here. Not with my pencil. Okay, that passes uh, T-Mobile. Next up is uh, CPN twenty twenty four uh, eight zero. Fifty two hundred Foster Road, which is actually the new site plan approval. For seven residential homes and. Or lots and three lots by accessible with a pirate. Maybe have a.
Hi, good evening. My name's Ian Cookman with McMahon and Ru Associates. I also have with me the applicant, um. John Graziosi from the River Home. Uh, we're here uh, seeking uh, preliminary overall approval for the project as described in the application. Conditional uh, on the comments received thus far from MRB Group. Uh, engineers comments, PRC comments. Um, this also went before uh, the ECB and that egg. Preservation District. And um, and also the county DOT Jim Fletcher. We've reviews, reviewed all the comments. Um, we don't see um, any deal breakers with, with the comments and the overall developability of the, of the project that we, that we see it. Um, it was discussed during PRC that we would segment these uh. Each individual lot during uh, final site plan approval. So it's our intention to come back to the town next week. With final site plan approval applications for lot one and two. We've got some builders that are anxious to break ground before fraud sets with, with foundation. Um, so. We would like to uh, address um. Any additional comments from, from the. Planning board tonight, and um, we're prepared to respond to all comments comprehensively uh, this week or early next week.
Um, well, sport, can you talk a lot or little about your stormwater out plan with the site?
Sure.
Kind of like the biggest. Topic here. And, and the, and the. Gorge is right behind there and how that water's gonna flow has really.
Yeah, so, so we've got uh, a bit of redundancy in our overall stormwater and drainage concept. With the uh. Realization um, that there are steep slopes and deep pod behind us. Uh, so we have. Um, construed. Uh, a series of swales with uh, check, permanent check dams installed intermittently. To slow down water draining off the site. In addition, um, we have. Uh, dry wells on each lot that we're going to be specifying in more detail during final site plan approvals. Um, that will handle disconnection of rooftop runoff, so that immediate first flush coming off an intense storm event. Will um, by design be retained underground in these dry detection systems. So a bit of redundancy um, in the quantitative control of stormwater. And then also the disconnection of rooftop runoff will lend itself well with water quality requirements and runoff reduction in general. So that's our overall plan. We've tried to convey as such. In our slip that was submitted as part of this application.
And so one comment about a swell. Uh, re, uh. Realigning. From the town.
By the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we sent our survey crew out there, got a shot of that cross culvert underneath Foster Road. And we've reconfigured the swale slightly. Um, for our final preliminary overall uh, plan set. But it more or less between the northernmost lot. And the, the next lot down right on Foster Road, that swell, it's more or less coming out right there. We've had to lower that soil a little bit, but the finished floor elevation of those two um. Houses of those two proposed dwellings are gonna be well above the invert of that culvert, so we don't anticipate any flooding. Of the finished floor elevation or the garage elevation.
Are you planning to raise the elevation of the homes at all or just going right? Current.
Yeah, there's, there's going, there's gonna be a, a bit of raising, um, certainly of the finished floor elevation to existing grades. Uh, but finished grades um, will be. You know, within a foot or two above uh, current existing elevation.
Thank you. Sure. Board?
You're just talking about the grading, and I just wanted to mention the grading and the elevation. I just wanted to mention. Um, we haven't seen this in a while, but. And maybe Sarah can help me with the semantics, but she's, she's busy. If you guys can remember. I wanted to just say for the record, um. The, what? So we had a couple of. Recent applications, like within the past few years where the finished. Elevation was higher than what was marked on the plan, and there was a trigger for that. Was it? Two feet or three feet?
Twelve inches.
Twelve inches, okay, thank you. I just wanted to say that for the record, if. If the difference is twelve inches from what is on plan versus what is actually built, then. You'll have to. Come back to us and. Please invite mercy, I'm kidding, but just it would come back to us for review and just. Especially with the stormwater being such a focus on this plot. That would continue to. Be a focus for us. So I just wanted to say that for the record, because you were noting it and it triggered my memory. Um. I had. So lots one and two, you said you'll, you'll come back on those two individually coming up, but I wanted to know some uh, ECB. Comments, and I don't have it written down verbatim, but uh, ECB had noted. comments, and I don't have it written down verbatim, but ECB had noted for lot one and two. Discouraging clear cutting or what's the right term that was used, but just like mindful. Yes. So that was a part of the ECB review, and I'm sure you've heard that. I just wanted to know. Thank you. Private drive things. So as a, and maybe this is just for us here, as a part of the preliminary overall to, because for private drives, we'd like to encourage agreements between the owners for maintenance, snowplow, all that fun stuff. At this stage, are we to implement or request kind of a shared use agreement or?
Let's see that's board and subdivisions like this. Cam is recommending that you not so much encourage, but require
Yes.
a shared use agreement that may already be in place, we're not, we still remember from the self.
Yeah, that's actively being pursued.
Okay, excellent.
I mean, I have the same comments of making sure that there's a shared safety. As well as making sure since they've already agreed that they have no concern applying over the ECB comments, that would make that part of any we have the turnaround fires.
There was that comment from the town. Forget who, but talked about the throat at.
Yeah.
At the the twelve foot driveway right at the turnaround, I think they were requesting that to be a little bit larger.
Yeah, we we've adjusted the driveway of lot one, I believe it is. To provide more of a hammerhead turn.
So, okay.
Just to clarify, since there's dry dry well in each, where are the dry wells?
The dry well should be shown on the utility plan.
And there's one for each.
And it's colored.
Color?
If you go to the detail sheet, there there's a detail for the what the dry well look like. The last detail sheet. Go to sheet nine of nine.
Ah, there it is. Line, yeah.
In the bottom right hand corner, you should see a chamber configuration. And that is the proprietary dry well technology, open bottom chamber. So promotes maximum ground absorption into the sub soils.
Yep, does that, will it come up to a pop off or just like a French drain inside?
Yeah, so that NBS pop off drain will will daylight and allow overflow to bypass into the swell system.
Thank you. I I will say, we, I like these, as a board member, these dry wells, because they're sight unseen. There is some maintenance involved with these, but for rain gardens, there's a lot more maintenance of these. So in the long term, I've seen these go on the plans and all of a sudden they get turned into rain gardens because it's easy.
Right.
So.
Yeah, noted.
Yeah. Uh, the just confirming, I'm trying to drive my twenty foot private drive. Yep.
Where where stormwater is being directed on the other one, so there's a agreement that they would accept the stormwater.
Oh.
Do we require them? If we go back. So stormwater being directed up to lot two. See the swell being created between. Three?
Yeah.
Directly on to lot two. Does lot two need to accept that?
Yes, and the staff is recommending that drainage easements as directed by the town engineer be put in place.
Okay.
With the driveway and shared view, try to access easement and shared use agreement, and I suppose with the drainage easements as well, just to get them done. We're going to recommend that they be filed, approved, filed prior to signature and librarian page be added to the plans before signature. It dawns on me, we've gone back and forth on whether they're not to require filing before signature. And in a situation with a private driveway, they're going to get one house built and they're going to think, well, who am I to split the cost with? Well, why isn't it found? But I think that's the situation. We should add the note and the library page to the plan, just to have another notice.
Thank you. Do you have a name planned for this drive? I would just ask, maybe you could talk to our historian, but he'd been asked that a lot of our new drives and roads get named after historical people and candidate. Just a thought.
Yeah.
I'm glad you always remember them.
He wants one of the term. Any other thing else? Any else?
The private drive, it's those three houses there. That's not a nature way, right? That it would not be under nature.
Do you want to talk about that, Gentry?
Hi, John Graziosi from River Homes. So whenever we do a private drive, we always put together a CPS seven, which is technically called the minimus HOA. So it's an association that gets filed with the attorney general's office. There's no land ownership, it's just an agreement that basically says that the three homeowner share equally in the cost of the driveway and puts a budget together. So it's a form of an HOA that is being ruled by the attorney general's office, but it's called simple CPS seven.
We're going to want both.
I, yeah, I was going to.
Clear use agreements can say the exact same thing. We like them reported here as a shared use agreement. And you've done a few.
Yeah, yeah, we'll record the agreement, of course, yeah. So the easement agreements all gets recorded. But on top of that, there's a formal agreement of how everybody's sharing the costs and budgets and things like that.
That's usually what we say.
And these are all in, these are all on Septic or Sewer, right? These connect to sewer?
Uh, yes, they're going to be, uh, E one system is going to be used to eject sewage to common gravity drain that's closer to Foster Road.
And town waters there, all those connected.
Yeah, individual meters.
Yeah, great piece of property for all that shit. Okay, we ask all our questions. Do we have any questions from the public? Would like to talk about this project?
Did we miss anything, Mr. Never and Mr. Cooper?
We seem good. We're recommending access easements, a shared use agreement. What is, as one condition? Drainage easements to be reviewed, approved, filed and as another condition. And then just all private utility easements. Like sewer as a third condition.
You said lot one and two is coming up? Yes, lot one and two.
Those are the two in the back?
Yeah.
Two in the back, yep. Well, those are the two that are mostly going to need to are the most involved in easements, I think.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Nothing from the public. Side entertain motion then to for this new site plan approval.
Should we do the seeker unlisted and then separate the the land? Things?
So, yeah, ECB recommend I see that dark sky, which is part of our code. Recommends homeowners refer to our watershed, TC. You may have mentioned this, but the town mentioned that the culvert is not large enough. You're going to enlarge that culvert that they talked about? Or is that what you talked about with the swell?
The cross culvert?
It said number five and number three. On Foster Road, there's a cross culvert, yeah, cross culvert.
Uh, no, we're not planning on upsizing that. Our our plan is to properly manage what comes from, comes out of the culvert.
Okay, thank you. Not all the Ts here. Yeah, I think we're ready.
Not the Ts and cross the Is.
Yeah.
I'll do the seeker unless I'll make a motion to approve that seeker enlisted for twenty four zero eight zero. Um, this project at fifty two hundred Foster Road.
Amanda and Mark has a section.
Any further discussion? How many now condition? Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. All in favor? Now, site.
I'm going to come motion to approve the site plan for CPM twenty four zero eight zero and fifteen there. We have three.
Yes.
Fifteen.
Well, actually, part of that discussion, you're asking whether we should be individually in individual conditions?
Yeah, let's have three separate conditions. Okay, so it's fifteen conditional as discussed.
Three additional names, or any access and ship easements, shared use agreement. I want the drainage easements, that involves the tailing easements, like all of that reviewed and approved by a town engineer, sonar turn, like filed with the county and library page number noted on the plan via signatures.
I'll second that. Cam's got a second. Any discussion?
Should we add a sixteen for accepting the findings ECB comments? It's noted in the findings. ECB comments are noted in the findings. Many of those things are code. Them are not. They've already acknowledged that they accept those. Should we make it a sixteen?
For like the lot one and two sort of thing? I'm hoping that.
I don't think you need to. Because there are head scenarios in the past when we've had these discussions to later kind of come back to us and say, well.
Yeah.
You know what you should do?
Yeah.
So I'll
Because it's the.
Change the motion to sixteen conditions.
So sixteen.
So with a now sixteen? Any further discussion?
Compliance with ECB recommendations.
So it's just that, it's in the word, the
Exactly.
Good. Yeah, all in favor? I was waiting for more.
I'm sorry. Give you more.
All right, that's good.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Okay, next up on my list is CPM twenty four zero eight three. Uh, CPM for new site plan approval. Thank you. At round five and twenty. Hi.
Good evening. I'm Wendy Mahar with Mahar Engineering here, representing us by the works. Uh, we're looking for subdivision and site plan approval for five thousand seven five and five and twenty. It's an existing approximately sixty acre site. Uh, we have received formal comments from MRB, have addressed those comments to those current site plans. We went to environmental and aid board. Nothing. I noted there, we've received ship of knowledge. We've provided a full SWIP stormwater pollution prevention plan for the project because we have a disturbance of about one point seven five acres. We have correspondence with Ontario County for the Septic approval. It's still ongoing. We didn't receive the all comments, but we have been talking with him. Don't anticipate anything that we we should, we need to worry about. We also have been in contact with Bill Crowe. But we haven't had any formal comments back from him now. I'd like to entertain any questions that you might have specific to the site.
Yeah, so it's for the board members. So like Wendy explained, this is a subdivision which we need to do first. Our own subdivision and then the site plan itself, so any questions on the subdivision approach?
Does, um, does DOT have to approve the site driveway location?
Yeah.
As part of this or part of site plan?
On site, I believe, but I haven't made the accident yet. On site, but I think you had DOT DOT approval? Or you're not?
We so we've been working with them and
Okay, so.
we show, you know, we went showed a formal profile of the road to prove site distances, so I really don't foresee any concerns.
So we'll just make that a conditional.
There's also in the MRB's comment letter.
Yeah.
Any other thing on site plan?
Just.
I mean subdivision, I'm sorry.
I just have a a question. I think I know the answer already. So the the subdivision specifically, kind of the boundaries. It's not like what we would typically see, where it's just like a box, right? So like a box around the existing and then all the rest of it, just a very square, perfect little blah, 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 whatever. Um, just to confirm the reason for kind of the weird shape or unconventional shape, let's say, is just to keep the NRI and the wetland and all the features all contained within the newly created lot.
That's correct. We didn't want to reinvent the easement that is generated by the wetlands with the existing parcel, and so we minimize the subdivision to seven acres for that existing structure. And it just made sense to subdivide that way to keep it simple.
And I understand from the, some of the other minutes from the other meetings, the newly creating, newly created parcel will be a relative of an individual that's connected or lives in the existing house.
So.
Yes.
So, okay.
So like we we think about like long term, like the boundaries of lots, like right now, since it's family. I'm sure it doesn't matter, but I just wanted to say that for the purpose. I didn't have any questions about it, just to, just wanted to raise it. So when we say. But that was.
I don't know if you heard me say it, but the public meeting in the.
Okay.
It's about seven minutes ago. Um. Yeah, other than subdivision is fairly simple on this one. Do some dividing land to build a house. Easy on the subdivision aspect. Any comment? I mean, you don't have any?
No, maybe your comments and revised materials that we were working through, just to make sure that they've all been addressed, but I think there's any major.
Did MRB note that uh, I didn't get, I didn't read it yet, the conditional for septic and a DOT approval?
DOT is definitely in there and.
Yes, it is.
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, okay. Any other questions on this? Anybody from the public want to talk about this one? I see no hands online or here. I'll entertain a motion for the US approval of the subdivision for CPN zero eight three.
I'll make the motion to approve CPN twenty four.
I'm sorry, eighty five.
Eighty five?
Eighty five.
To we gotta do secret?
Oh, we didn't get her secrets.
Secret on list.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Think so.
I'm happy to make a motion for the unlisted action, secret resolution, CPN twenty three eight three slash eighty five.
I'll say.
Any discussion? No, all fair?
Hi.
Secret passes.
Now we're. I will make the motion, CPN twenty four eighty five, correct?
Eighty five.
Single stage subdivision resolution for fifty five seventy five, roughly five and two.
Second now. Tim, we're the second, any discussions on the subdivision? None, say all in favor?
Hi.
Next, Wendy, let's talk about your site plan. Um.
Talked about it a little bit already.
It's ultimately going to be about fifty three acres, a little less than fifty three acres. Um, the proposal is single residence, kind of a barn dominium type of structure. Um, they are going to have a few amenities, like a tennis court and a precipice, but other than that, it's it's pretty simple.
Any intent to continue to farm it for them?
Right now, no, um. They finished up for the season. Uh, they haven't really talked to the farmer again for next season, but at this point, they're not planning on.
It's hey, Eric, tell them.
Okay.
Hey, yeah.
Yes, yes, just saying.
Was noted, did that say net loss of egg?
It is noted as net losses egg, but not a prime egg, from what Bob was saying, yeah. I always think about the farmer and how that he loses out. Um. Anything else from anybody? Or I can find. Look.
CB noted the.
Wetlands.
The wetlands.
Wetlands and. Make that that's noted on the site plan.
Yeah, we had it delineated again with the DEC and it's all looked in that bloodline decent. To the town.
Oh, you had said the ship though that was received.
Yep.
It will. Uh. We said ECB, we talked.
I've read the ECB comments. So really, just they're just referring to dark sky compliance, same things we talked about already in the last case, they probably heard. They also put a note uh uh referring to Canada Lake Waterhead Association information on Lake Friendaloo. Related to excess fertilizers on support and especially in wetland areas. Is that something that they're willing to comply on?
Yes.
Dave, you're in check right now. Just look them up.
Oh. Get a look, one more thing.
You you mentioned the road, the driveway access a little bit, I know that that needs to be approved, I think, were you thinking site line, is that?
Well, I saw that there's details on on the cycling. Or that, I just didn't know whether me as a board required DOT approval prior to subdivision, yeah, since they're here.
We can just condition it. Uh, and then a public address, so you did this up for one of the.
I mean, it was. It was done in detail, obviously.
Yeah, we we decided to put that profile on there because it is kind of the unique area where it's a little.
Is there any any uh stormwater management?
Yes, we did a full sweep, we're doing a filtration by our extension area that's capturing all the runoff from the house and most of the driveway. There's just a small portion of the driveway that will run towards the swale towards the roadside, so.
Right. And your driveway is all paved?
It's.
And it's at least twelve feet, I can't remember. Yes, yeah.
That that side of hill, like the streams down to one of the culverts on five and twenty that that flooded. Is it a year ago when soccer broke? Was flooded as well.
Oh, toward the bottom of that hill?
Towards the bottom of that hill, yes. To the to the east.
Yeah, most of our most of our development runs to the northwest. Gets infiltrate or gets filtered through the bio retention and then it flows into the white land. Oh.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's it's going.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. So there's very little that from the development traveling to the east.
To the road.
Correct, just a small portion of the driveway.
The driveway, good.
Yes, we shouldn't have any concerns with the runoff.
Excellent.
And we've done the stormwater management to handle the one ten and hundred year storms.
Couldn't ask for more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public? Any comments? See none?
Did you run numbers by cancer beyond the hundred years? I know that that is just expect that, I mean, we've had three of them in the past two years, I've been. So, yeah, we'll start seeing, we will start asking that question.
Which is, yeah.
No, you're right. Any more from the board, any? Comments, none from the public, closed public hearing? And uh, delivering a little bit, any more thoughts on this property?
Do we have any changes to any of the findings listed for the? Single stage site plan? I don't think so. Any changes?
If I can. Add the committees on. Comments which weren't available at the time when I.
Cool.
That would be number one.
I'm looking at conditions, I only have two on this. Uh, point noted one added condition during years to year improvement, so it's number twelve, so eleven. Yeah.
Uh, we had one for ECB like we did the last one.
Like the ecological features, then I feature stuff, yeah. I agree with that.
And we'd like to make a motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve single stage site plan. For CPN twenty four oh three slash oh five. At fifty five seventy five and five and twenty with twelve conditions.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? You go, Wendy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is. Little Cheshire Road, CPN eighty four with Burnet.
It's a new hire for Brenner, yes.
Wait, wait just a second, Mark comes back, just give me one second. Pardon?
What what document?
Um. Good question. Um. Against maybe the floor plan for.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
Probably not in purple pen.
Yeah, that's. You may imagine everyone, Mark.
Sure, sure.
Oh, I'll do this later. None, but, okay, Brett, I'm sorry, just go ahead.
It's okay, no.
I'll give you a right.
Sure, I can wait.
No, that's fine, go ahead.
Alright, so well, I, you know, I wanted to just thank you guys um for the opportunity to have a short panel in uh in Canada, look. Uh, for the last few years, almost three years now, um. You know, people want to visit this area because of the hard work you guys do and maintaining the sound and and it's beautiful. Uh, I I want to thank Ed, my neighbor, um, you know, of course, uh, I know Ed, we've had some differences. Um, which mostly were my fault, uh, and I I think we started off. Um, having a good relationship and I was appreciative of you, of you, you know, inviting me here home and. Um, just had a great afternoon, spent some good time with you, were able to collaborate on certain things you want to do on the fence that we built together, um. And like I mentioned, the differences that we had, uh. Were were definitely uh my fault and, you know, it stems from uh two events that we had about two years ago. Um, and of course, I I regret that, it was during the pandemic, we had so many inquiries for weddings, uh, because people were having a lot of cancellations. Um, from their their scheduled weddings at catering halls that weren't allowed to, you know, have large gatherings. Um, I personally was affected by that situation as well, um, and you know, after having so many inquiries, we we just uh. Said, okay, let's go ahead and and um, we we booked um two couples uh that had weddings back to back to back weekends, um. And it just, you know, naively, didn't think it would be disruptive and certainly regret that, um. But, uh, you know, since then, um. Haven't had any events, um, and I think, you know, uh, my neighbors would agree that, uh. There's been no disruptions, um. And we've been lucky enough to house guests visiting the town, um. And, uh, you know, I think, uh. You know, mostly we've had large groups and and what you guys are doing as far as requiring a special use permit, um. Makes complete sense, of course, I'm fully in support of that, um. And I think, you know, I don't benefit benefit the residents and and the guests alike.
Thank you, Brett. I will say for the board, um. And and full disclosure, I live on Johnson Road.
Oh, okay.
Near Ed, um, down the road a little bit, just full disclosure of it, um. Brett is requesting a eighteen. Person Airbnb. It was rated or stated one other place for thirty two. This is currently asking for an up to eighteen, he is currently has, I believe, twelve. This is Airbnb right now.
Yes.
Um, according to the state, the town went in and looked at your house. And actually checked the square footage, that's why I had this floor plan up here on where the beds are. Um, in a four bedroom home, you put beds in other places, but according to the state. That is allowable, and uh, according to the state, New York State, he's allowed actually thirty two, I believe.
Which is just insane.
Yeah, which is insane. So which, uh, by law, he could have that, but it's only requesting eighteen. Um, he's come for us today to do a special use permit. Uh, for uh, short term rental. He has to do this before he can get a short term rental permit. So the what we need to discuss is. Uh, in this public meeting. Um, how it affects the neighbors. Uh. How it affects the area, really, I mean, the whole thing, uh, things like that. So. So and also not to mention, it's the first one. Uh, with others coming down the road, uh. We could approve for up to three years on a special use permit. Uh, so those are all within our our guidelines. So with that.
Can I add add something to that if you don't mind?
Yep.
Um. In addition, that you're issuing a special use permit, the other things you have to consider are. Two twenty dash thirty five B, special use permits may be approved by the planning board, only after it is. Found that the following standards have been met. And the two twenty dash thirty five is the general special use permit. Section in town code, it's not a tourist home, although that was a good guess, it's pretty close to them, but it's not. And you're not issuing a specific special use permit as you usually do like for a personal wireless cell tower or. Um. Or a farm stand. Um, this is just a general special use permit, so you have to go through each of the. A through K H, no. One through six. And number six contains A through H, so fifteen inch factors before you can bring them. And I would suggest, and I guess request that you do that. That you actually go through that review specifically, since this is your first one.
So with that said, you said it was two one?
Two twenty thirty five B. Did I have that right?
Yes, two twenty dash thirty five B.
Especially. Should we just read these individually then?
I think so, but.
Alright, so the especially use permits may be approved by the town planning board that solely after it's been found that the following standards have been met. Number one, the proposed special use is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the town cop plan. Any discussion there?
It's not inconsistent.
It's not inconsistent because we have several of these in the area.
Yes, there's. We have specific.
Guidelines.
Breakworks around special use for short term rentals and.
And also, well, this is. You're you're kind of right, number one, right?
Yeah.
I might also note that the town just passed the ordinance that regulates this document, and doing so. Made the determination that was consistent with the comments of the.
Okay.
So yeah, thank you.
Then, yes.
And noted that you helped write. The compliance.
Yes.
Yeah, you don't get it, but. Uh, Mr. Cooper's comp plan does also, as their town manager just pointed out, uh. Suggest and recommend the promotion of tourism.
Yeah.
Good point, yes.
Number two, the proposed use is consistent with the stated intent of the zoning district in which it occurs. Uh, I believe we're in Ag two. Right, is that right?
Yeah, let's see what the stated.
Yeah, AR two. Um, and in this district, it is allowed.
Let's see here. AR two, stated intent of the AR two purpose. The purpose of the, oh, it's, I'm pretty sorry. Purpose of the AR two agricultural rural residential district is to encourage a proper environment to foster normal agriculture. is to encourage a proper environment to foster normal agricultural operations and land uses, to maintain an open rural character, to protect viable agricultural soils and areas, to conserve natural resources and to assure compatible types and densities of residential development on, on lands where public sewers do not exist and are not envisioned in the future and where public water service coverage is intermittent.
I believe it's part of the zoning use, um, if you go to the zoning.
Um, my determination, no. This is just a general special use permit.
Yeah, got it. Well, I don't see any problem with that. The location, size and use of the structure involved with the proposed specially used permit nature and intensity of the specially good permit, operation size and layout of the site in relation to the proposed specially use are such that it will be compatible with the orderly development of the zoning district where the special use may be allowed.
I think this raises the septic expansion, which I think is in progress, is that right? So, um, this septic expansion, if we're requesting the special use for eighteen the septic requirements, and this is more for Mr. Cooper and engineering sort of questions. Is, is the septic and the eighteen person um, request in alignment with each other? Or is there undersizing considerations?
Review any of the septic plans, but my presumption is that it's been approved by the appropriate authority in size and proposed use of the site.
Is, and it's.
Usually goes by veteran.
Right.
Yeah, and we had a thousand gallon tank, um, and it was okay for sixteen guests and, uh, we expanded it to be fifteen hundred gallons.
And is that in place now or is that in progress?
It's been completed, it was completed originally.
Okay, right, I think I had that, that it was in, in my head.
Yes.
Stay.
There was a question of, you know, I think if you had a thousand gallons, um, for, it had a, have a holding, I, I'm not an engineer, but it had to be able to hold, uh, the waste for more than twenty-four hours and if, um, you know, we had guests say for, you know, over twenty-four hours, then they were, you know, um, increasing the, the size of the tank, so we, we, increases.
I will say the location, size and structure, I mean, the size and structure is not changing. The intensity has, will be increasing, of course, size and layout doesn't change too much. Uh, just the intensity is not unique, is somewhat unique to, uh, this, the area. Uh, with four-bedroom, standard four-bedroom house now is, is growing, so just wanted to say that aloud.
Did the guests have a laundry facility?
Yeah, yeah.
Water.
Any other questions on three?
Nope.
Number four, as determined by the code enforcement officer, the facilities to be impacted by the proposed use will comply with the New York State Uniform Fire Protection, Prevention and Building Code, I assume that's what Kristen did earlier and reviewed that stuff?
I think, so as, as we're doing this, guys, and I think I hate to put stuff off that we could do today to another day, but unless you've got a letter from the code enforcement officer in this application saying, I confirm that there's adequate fire, uh, this complies with fire code, I don't think you can grant a special use permit.
Wouldn't it be already granted with it's already been approved for the twelves?
I don't know. Yes, I, I'm quite confident that our code enforcement officer does that, but.
Couldn't it also be a condition of improvement?
I think we do it.
Where?
Right there, on the street comments.
Good.
Application is sufficient, codes has no current or past violations of the property. What he means by codes is the code enforcement office.
Yeah, mine.
Okay.
They are may not be available.
And I'm not trying to put you through the wringer here, you're the first one, and having been involved in the, uh, legislative intent on this, uh, through many months of discussion with the town ordinance, ordinance committee, um, the intent of requiring this special use permit was to get that extra assurance, that guarantee. And our special use permit code, the two-twenty dash thirty-five requires that you do this every time for every special use permit, we've never gone through two-twenty dash thirty-five because most of those topics are covered in the specific special use permit provision uh, and the site, site, site plan provisions. But this special use permit, being a general special use permit and being specifically required by the town board with the intent to cover a really detailed extra review, I'm going to suggest that we put this off to give the applicant a chance to give a response to that, who know both of the applicants? Oh, I'm assuming, and I'm just looking up, didn't do that. Um, but there's no real reason you would have known to do that.
So.
But I, I think you've got to have, have the applicant lay it out for you and, and put the little thorough review on all STRs, especially use permits, so that you can do that on all STRs, especially use permits in the future. That's. I hate to have to push stuff off, but I'm not very comfortable with you guys granting this without having been prepared by me and I didn't, you know, and, and, uh, having us all look at it in terms of especially used permit that has never before been granted.
So, your suggestion to continuation.
I am.
Can we continue with the thought process of the?
I think, yeah, absolutely.
Like that, that would, um, help, uh, brighten the future to clear things up. Uh, is that fair?
I think that's a great idea, and, you know, maybe it's in here, but I'm just looking, but, and I don't see the information kind of need to grant this. But, by all means, please.
So I'll delay the, the last, uh, few codes there until another date. Um. And ask the board, do you have any questions?
Well, but I think for clarity for you, as you need to make sure you're dressed, that you're prepared to address each of those ones.
Yeah.
Demonstrate that you have met those, at least in interpretation, you have met those.
And for confirmation, that's two-twenty thirty-five B, one through
Six.
Six.
Including six, eight through eight.
H, yeah. Um. And, and some of those items in six were actually some of my comments. Uh. But I'll hold off mine until the board makes some calls. Tim, do you have any comments? No, Mark? Amanda?
Um, I'm going to go through, um, probably you're going to say something about parking, so like.
Well, he has some, I've seen it.
Okay. Okay, um, let me go through my.
Parking screen. Parking in any way screened from your neighbor's viewship.
No.
It's existing, but, I'm there for some time. This is opposing news. Um, is it, that's a good, pardon, is it not a proposed, but it's in the first, is the proposed increase in capacity?
Yeah, his, his capacity is, sir, how many cars per bedroom?
One.
One car per bedroom, so.
Well, the short-term rental law requires parking, adequate parking in the so basically the one parking space per bedroom that's going to be, so we need six parking spaces.
Question, I looked at on Encore, uh, graphed it out, he had like more than enough space, forty-nine cars, even. There was a lot of space up there.
Relatively, the big section of it is naturally screened by. Three or eight, I think.
So, I, I heard you mention something about a wedding party was the actual event there as well?
Yeah, two years ago, yeah.
And, and do you suspect that that could happen again where maybe, um, there's a larger event that's being held at this, this property that you're bringing more cars?
Absolutely not, no, no, we do not permit events and, and, you know, that's part of, uh, the information that the guests receive and Airbnb actually doesn't permit events anyway.
Okay. Yeah, your, 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 um, statement of operations state, no parties, no events, um.
What's your advertised, what, what do you, is it Airbnb, what, what's nice for you?
Uh, Airbnb, NBRBO, and, uh, our property manager also has a direct book on website.
Um, okay, anyone?
No.
Neil?
And this is just for my own verification, um, number of bedrooms, I feel like I saw four, five, six listed in different like areas and I guess more specifically like for the house in zoning, like, how many bedrooms is it? And then are you, are you using any spaces that are technically like not bedrooms as bedroom spaces?
Yeah, yeah, uh, so it's a four-bedroom house, um, there are two additional spaces that are being used as bedrooms, uh, very large spaces that, you know, uh, allow bigger rooms to accommodate bigger rooms, so. You know, we, it's not like we have a bunch of bunk beds stacked up, it's like, you know, two king-size beds, six king beds. And there's two roles.
Yeah, okay.
Kid wants to sleep in the room, the parents or something like that.
Which is all good with New York State laws on that. Um. My turn.
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, also disclosure, I did call Brett earlier yesterday, I can't remember what it was, uh, asking to get into the house, but he was busy, so I couldn't. Um. I would ask, um, as, um, this has happened before, not to my exact knowledge, but I, I neighbors there, uh, that your property bounder, boundaries be marked so that your people don't walk around on other people's property. Uh, that has happened, that to my knowledge, twice that I know of, once with an ATV and once just walking through the property. So if you could, I know your, your house rules, um, don't cover that. But if you could just, uh, at least mark your binding, because you talk about the barns that aren't on your property, don't go in there. Uh, if you could mark your property line, that would be good to help people stay on that property, which is, there's a lot of property there.
Bob, I have a thought on that. On the sign of the STR required signage posted on the interior, um, you could, you could require like a little map of the property as well. Um, crossed my mind right after, that's, that might have been a good idea.
Right, yeah.
That's yours.
And, um, add to your house rules, you know?
And we actually have, um, we have had, uh, the way that the lawn and the grass is being cut well before the property lines now, it used to be continued into the property line, but after, um, John Cal and the neighbor told me that somebody was walking across the boundary, uh, we, we instructed their landscaper to leave plenty of space.
Okay.
And now it's being, you know, cut, so I, I, I don't find it hard to believe for somebody to cross the property lines away, it's, you know, but, you know, we have no problem.
Okay. No, it's horses, it's horses.
Yeah, there's two, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Except for there's a natural barrier that's created.
That was the fence you're talking about, right? On edge property. Uh, house rules. Um. Another thing I've been racking around in my brain also about, um, since you're going to be the first, um, and we're unsure of these events and how to ensure the future for the neighborhood and everything else and yourself, uh, my thought is maybe, uh, giving you a one-year and seeing how you do.
Sure.
Um, and then through that history, potentially, you know, extending into the future and things like that. Um, that's my initial thought. And instead of like a full-blown, you got it all, I have a thing, let's, let's talk about how you're going to maintain the, like you say in your rules, uh, maintaining the neighborhood, uh, things like that, the quiet hours and things like this. Um, so that's. Anything else from anybody else?
Oh, Monday, or seven-three now.
Yeah, that was my initial thought, I hadn't talked to Chuck about it.
Well, I think the code two oh one eight says the permits are valid for one year from beginning issue.
Is that the short-term rental?
Not, he's talking about the special use.
Especially.
Yeah, I guess you're right.
The short-term rental would only be valid for one year. But the special use.
And if we had a longer term on our special use, you would just renew.
Right.
Right, yeah, especially this permit, say it was three years.
Um.
Presuming you get your short-term rental comment right after your special use permit would be approved, that your special use, your short-term rental permit would need to be renewed for the twelve-month period and could be without coming back to the planning board unless the special use permit was also just one year, sure, you have to come back for the renewal of the special use permit or however the terms are defined for it.
That is new.
I don't know, but.
Yeah.
Well, we'll probably, we'll discuss it more at our next, next meeting.
Is there a way that we could make at least the timing overlap, so it's not like I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm just not processing it right now.
Well, he will, he can't get his, he's has a, he has a permit right now, right?
Yeah.
Right, for the twelve, but he would have to get, after we approved our special use, he would have to get another uh, short-term, start at the same time.
The short-term has, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, has, the short-term rental permit has to be renewed every single year, is that accurate?
Yep.
Um, it's, it's, it's a simple renewal procedure, it's not, you know. The special use permit, under the terms of the town code, uh, for any special use permit, say that unless the planning board puts a time limit on it, it's indefinite. So, once you get a special use permit, it can just last forever.
Okay.
Check, town code chapter two oh one, since you've got to get a permit, an STR permit every single year.
Okay.
In this case, I think the town board and, and the planning board think it might be a good idea to not grant indefinite and special use permits for short-term rentals, right off the bat.
Right, basically.
So, you know, if you do two years, there will be a one-year renewal.
Yeah.
And then, you know, they, they may not line up for, on year two, but I don't think that's the end of the world.
No.
Okay, thank you for stepping me through that, because I was getting lost.
Open up to the public now. Anything for the public, do you want to talk about it?
I, I just want to say that I did upload the section to the workspace, so you can find it.
Oh, that, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Come on. Oh, yeah, you have to tell me your name, where you live.
I'm Yvonne Chavez, hi.
Hi.
Forty-four hundred Little Cheshire Road, we share the, the northern boundary close to the road. And I do have to say, at the beginning, there was an event that shook the quiet neighborhood, um, and we were upset, not knowing what to expect next. Um, then there was another smaller. Um, and then I guess people were complaining, and I really have to thank him, the way he responded. I haven't heard anything more since then. Um, but I, I will add, I just, I think the town really has, uh, protected us. And Chris is going to have to help me here. And Chris is gonna have to help me here. After, if the neighbors complain, is it after the third complaint? When do they lose the?
There's a, uh.
Sorry.
Um, there's a, it's specified in town code. Or, yeah, new town code. Um, it depends on the nature of the complaint. There is no automatic suspension on three complaints, it's three complaints, it's any complaints that have been investigated by the building inspector. Uh, and determined to have merit. If the merit is, if, I mean, if it's, for example, uh, septic system that's overflowing and leaking onto somebody else's property. That's, everything's gonna get pulled right away, under a lot of different provisions of our town code. And nobody's gonna get to stay there, uh, on a short term rental basis, if it's. Uh. I don't know how to phrase it, if it's a less serious violations, I think that's left up to the code enforcement officers discretion. Zoning officers discretion, and I think that's the way the town board intended. So three strikes and you're out, wasn't something, three complaints and you're out, I don't think is included in it, but to be honest, I'm not a hundred percent sure. The zoning officer is authorized to suspend an STR permit if lack of compliance with this chapter is repeated or habitual. Ongoing or poses a risk to the health, safety or general welfare of the community. Um. So it's not three specific, it's habitual or ongoing, and that's left in the discretion of the zoning and the report enforcement officer.
So. Uh, would you know who to call then?
I probably won't be calling. I'm just saying that.
Assuming you're gonna start firing shots. Oh, I have the warning.
You wouldn't know?
I was just gonna say, the town, I was at the ordinance, um, meetings, and I think the town is looking out. For the towns, and so I have no complaints. But I do have a humorous observation, if I could make it, we live in a very, very old farmhouse.
Yeah.
He's got a very, very new, uh. And I guess it's hard to see the numbers, so we see cars coming up for the Airbnb, and we can always tell, and we get a giggle. I don't know what we charge for night, but, you know. We see them coming up, and all of a sudden they slow down, the car slows down, and some of them just back right out, and other ones, one of them pulled up, and we're just sitting here laughing. We know they're looking at the house going, we're paying how much for that? But other than that, I, I feel that the town is really protecting us, and I appreciate your response, uh, Michelle, thank you.
Thank you. What's your name, sir?
My name's Advano, and I live at, uh, five three zero on Johnson Road, and we share a one thousand foot property boundary with, uh, Dr. Roy. Um. And us and I are both against the ex, the expansion of this permit. We've had bad experiences with, um, this STR. Ever since, uh, the property was purchased, uh, in twenty twenty one. We've made complaints, uh, with photographs, we've made verbal complaints, and we've told the town, uh, of our concerns about how it's being managed. We were called by, uh, Brett and told not to photograph anything on his property. Which basically put the end to our ability to complain. I wouldn't trust this guy any farther than I control, and I don't think he deserves an expansion to his permit. Couple of reasons, number one, I don't think an emergency deal can make it with that, make it up that driveway. Now, if you remember what happened with the fire department at Dawson's house in June. Where they had a water main break, house flooded. Fire truck tried to get up there, couldn't make it because of the driveway, and went off the edge. And Vanessa and I sat there in our front porch, watching the crane vehicle employed to pick this fire truck up. And get it out of the ditch in the Dawson's driveway. This driveway is no better. If the plan, has a planning board been to the property to see the property?
Yes.
Have you been in it?
Not, not in it, outside, outside of.
I think, I think a visit inside the property is important. Particularly how he's using old libraries as, as, uh, bedrooms. And there are spaces in the house that weren't originally bedrooms, being bedrooms, that needs to be looked at. If the septic system, this is the other thing about the character of the neighborhood. If this permit is granted, I don't have a problem with what he's doing with, you know, what he had, where he had eight, eight or twelve people right now. That's, seems to be working pretty good. If he expands that septic system, or puts building. And does construction in the house, that house is never, ever, ever gonna go back to a single family dwelling. That's the character of our neighborhood. And I think the, uh, AR two district specifically, specifically says character of the neighborhood and over, and over our density. This is doing both. You know, put a huge septic system in, yeah, yeah, you know, that'll wind up making it a, uh, STR forever. We anticipated when, uh, Dr. Roy bought the property, he said, oh, you know, we're gonna have some friends come and visit. And, uh, we're, we're gonna be out there now and then, thinking that, great. We got people that have purchased this nice piece of property up on the hill, that's been a single family ever since it was built in nineteen eighty one. You watched it be enveloped. And the house is not intended to be an STR. But, with, with the price of money, and the ability to purchase properties, uh, in. That are probably haven't been sold in a few months, um, during the, um, pandemic. I imagine this property was picked up for a fair, reasonable price. Mind out and live in Cannon Day with, for God's sakes. Please, don't give this gentleman his expanded permit. Keep it where it is.
Thanks, sir.
And even if, and even if he doesn't, even if you don't expand the permit, that driveway needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh. Continuing resolution to what meeting?
Sarah?
And that's the first meeting from September, unless.
Three, three actions in September tenth.
Yeah, we don't have one.
Is that at that time, or? We usually do a week prior, so they have to get stuff to us by the third, if they made a delay.
That's.
That'd be kinda tight.
It was inspected by, by Kristen Smith, right, as far as.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Um, it, the whole was inspected by Kristen Smith. Um, and she went through, you know, compliance with the fire code, you might, might know about that.
So she would have inspected it based on bedroom size and, um, so that she could do the calculations for the number of people allowed. In the bedroom from New York State, um, but she's not a fire inspector, she's not a fire enforcement officer.
Yeah, special use permit requirement says, the code enforcement officer, the planning board has to be satisfied that the code enforcement officer. Made a determination that the facilities to be impacted by the proposed use will comply with New York State Uniform Fire Protection and Building Code. I would imagine. He's done so, because. Well, no, he hasn't had the opportunity at this number, so I just need him to have that opportunity and, but. You know, a little comment, so the planning board has a fact on which to rely in making that determination.
And just a little quick reminder is that the requirements of the short term rental permit application are different and separate. From the requirements laid out in that two twenty dash thirty five G for special use permits, they are two entirely separate things.
So I would suggest that.
And, uh, Chris, we, before you say that. With the fire protection, uh. Uniform state of fire protect, protection. Uh, that driveway would not pass, the fire department. There's only eight people.
Yeah, I have no idea, I, I think you're probably right, but. The best person to make that determination is the code enforcement officer, and you're not allowed to make. Any decision until you find that, not that it's, that it's in compliance or not, but that the code enforcement officer has determined it's in compliance. But I think you're dead on right, Bob, but we need that, we need.
So the tenth is probably. I need to tend to you soon, yeah.
We only do three on the twenty fourth.
Twenty four.
So. You know, we need, and I just haven't had a chance to review. And, you know, the submission requirements in two twenty five, two twenty three thirty five A. Requires sketch plan, a statement of operations fully describing the nature and scale of the use, land and facilities. To be impacted in the hours of operation, I'm not certain that. The submitted statement of operations covered those exactly, maybe it does, but. That's just a recommendation to make sure that it says what the code requires it to say. Um. A statement responding to each of the, the factors would be one through six. Some visits, one of the fire applications, no, I don't think that's pretty much covers it. You may want, you have the option to respond to the letter, the comments made here today, and or the letters submitted by one of the neighbors that's on board.
Continuing resolution to the twenty what? Well, I did that, I guess. Or, yeah, another one, another short term on the twenty fourth. He keeps imagining.
I'm sitting in that right now, yeah.
Code enforcement, the text message just. Um. Said they could have paperwork done and inspection. If the paperwork and an inspection done by September third, if granted access by the homeowners, I still think that that's just one item. Um, I want to point out, code enforcement is willing to work to get this done as quick as you can.
So I appreciate that, I think there's, there's, uh, there's guests there right now, uh, through the way. Uh, but, you know, immediately after that, um. I don't know how to, how to schedule that one, I guess you guys would be able to provide us.
I still say it better on the later part, in September two.
It, it sounds like based on the availability of getting in, it's more likely. That we'll have everything we need or review for the September twenty fourth.
Right, I would also ask you that you find a date that we could get in.
You know, I didn't realize that Kristen was a part of that. Do we do that as a group, or how do we?
Um, however, you can. Put forth to Sarah or somebody that, you know, here's some time that we could get in there or something like that. Cause I mean, some of these guys work all day. Right, and we can't go as a group either, so.
I'm looking at the sketch plan, and maybe I'm missing something. But it's. Oh, survey, does that show parking or something like that? We gotta get parking identified and whatever else.
And it's just a second.
Needs to be identified on it.
There's a full survey that should be attached.
Okay. That's about all I can come up with right now. Um. Um, the one thing that the planning board maybe could give a. I guess you can't really, because you don't have a site plan that identifies the things you need to have identified on it, but you will have to make a determination. Of whether or not to waive the requirement for professionally prepared site plan. Or site plan approval, which is also part of this application. Um, I don't know. Um, if that's something you'll be interested in doing or not, um, but I don't think you can make the determination now. Just based on, you don't have to, find out, it's a sort of site plan that shows you what it means to show. Yeah. Every time we're special use, they're also required to. They did submit a waiver request for. Professionally prepared site plan. Um. Yeah, the senior planning board wanted to comment on it.
My comment only be, it didn't like show everything, like parking spot.
Oh, yeah.
Line spot, spots, and things like that.
Good question, yes.
You good?
Yes.
So shall we make a motion to continue to?
I'll maintain that motion.
Well, since I'm halfway there, I'm, I'll make the motion to continue twenty four, this eighty four, sorry, I don't have it up anymore. Um, uh, we'll continue that to be September twenty fourth.
I'll second that.
The, uh, additional information to be provided is the determination by code enforcement, applies to the new code. Uh, and the additional supporting information, right, related to two twenty thirty five, three, one through six.
One through six, yes.
七月 twenty fourth is be provided by the seventh.
That's the two seven four.
I can't, I can't ask you. Yeah. All in favor? Oh, Brett, until the twenty eighth. I mean, twenty fourth, okay.
Thank you.
I might join that one, Zoom guys, it was.
It's okay.
Drive it home.
You know, it's like, please, you can stay if you want to, it's probably later.
I know, I know, it's really.
It's weird, I'm working tomorrow morning.
All right, guys. All right, did you catch my closing?
Yeah, I just mentioned it.
Well, actually, it's a continuation, but. Of the.
But you took the public care.
Yeah.
It remains.
Yeah, so it remains open until. Uh, for business coming up next, I need approval for the meeting notes of the last meeting. Any comments?
I was excused from the meeting, but I read the minutes, Chris, I'm comfortable with. Like involved, right, wasn't.
You've read them, and you're comfortable, you're not swearing into their accuracy or approving them.
Yeah.
So middle.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Who was second? I'm sorry, Mark?
Sure.
Okay, Mark. We have a surety in order to act upon, Mark.
I can't read mine right now, still. Thank you. This is.
This is the, um.
Like, that's gonna be done a beautiful job. Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we, the surety release on twenty twenty two dash oh twenty nine and one hundred in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred fifty nine dollars and fifty cents.
I'll second.
Great discussion, done here, all in favor?
Bye.
We'll give the money back.
Second one is. Uh. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is a, just, I'm sorry, it's not just some other.
So we have no referrals from the town board, no referrals from anybody else. Uh, no recommendations to the zoning board, uh, anybody wanna talk about special projects?
Um, I'm, I'm happy to just kind of update the board on some stuff that I'm working on, uh. Related to the overall environmental aspect of some of the stuff. Uh, been talking to a bunch of different folks in our community and others to look at how we can transplant some of our code. Boilerplate some of the things that we talked about, the many things that E C P recommends that we agree to, Ben White tonight. Hoping that we can introduce some of that code, uh, really looking at things like stormwater and the issues around hundred year, hundred year incidents and things along those lines. Plus taking into consideration some of the other things that we talked about related to changes in upcoming codes. Uh, hopefully that, that happens, and that'll be the, I think, introducing something there, but I'll be, next, Murk, I'll be, uh, reaching out to you to talk about some of that. Sarah, I'll be, I've already sent you a request to edit up some of it, but really just trying to streamline some of the things that we're looking at um, already, pay special attention to stormwater runoff, and aspects, aspects of that, and introduce places that we think means have some options on potentially alternative energy and other strategies to, uh, help the community. So I'll be working on that, that's my project basis for the new year, or maybe four.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Happy to have lots of input.
Okay. Add me to the backup list.
I can individually naturally on all of those things.
It sounds like a lot, so it's, yeah.
Very good. And last thing is training, make sure when training's up to date, are you having, do you have any done?
I've got two hours.
Two hours, two more.
Cause you did twelve last year.
Yes.
Yep, perfect.
I think everybody else was looking pretty good. Good, um. I think that's the end of my schedule.
Bob, good job.
Let me make the motion, I get my chair back.
I don't know, Sarah, Sarah threw us a.
Why don't you sit over there for eighteen years and we'll see how it goes.
The whole swivel thing.
I think it was Mr. Natalie inspired this, they're changed.
No, no, Sarah, Mr. Natalie. Sarah authorized.
Okay, that's.
Also, I set up the rooms.
Yeah.
She's here. We better get a longer table, let's take this stuff out.
Yeah, we chucked.
He's gonna be up there.
Motion.
Yes, you may.
Motion to adjourn in twenty fourteen.
See, that's a.
Second.
All in favor? Sarah, how do I sign this?